We'll do.
Oh. Okay. Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay, good. I need it. Yeah, it's good.
Just so sure.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, no, it's all good, though. I like it. I like having it because I want to save this. This is important because I think this is going to be going forward. We're going to have to really look into this stuff. And I want to have a little three-way binder of it and like be able to refer to the hard copy. It's nice to be a one highlight thing if you take notes. I have one. Yeah, I brought one. Yeah. Yeah, I'm looking for a specific line in the original ordinance with the Weaver track. There it is. Matt, if I need help with math? Okay, okay. Okay.
We're going to wait one more minute.
Sure. I guess. By, I guess by default. Sure, no problem. I don't, alright. We're going to give Mr. Duffy another minute. He's on his way and he will be here any minute. Okay. We're going to call to order the meeting. You'll have to forgive me. I'm a little rusty on my Robert's Rules skills, but, um, okay. So we're going to kick off the meeting with a citizen communication. Everyone can take their time up at the mic, but try to be brief. It seems like we have a lot of people that need to speak tonight. We normally keep it to four minutes at city council, but it's a little bit more open tonight, so please state your full name and your address.
And Commissioner, typically for this, this section of the public comments, this is if you want to speak to an item that's not on the agenda. If you wish to speak, especially to one of the public hearing items that's later in the agenda, you can wait until that public hearing is opened, unless, of course, you need to leave. So we'd ask that if you're here to speak to a specific agenda item.
Yeah, we have two other citizen comment sections tonight. So if you'd like to take this moment to say something, you're welcome to, but it should be more general, I guess.
Hello, hello? My name is Sarah Ponder. I'm going to use my four minutes in some form or fashion. I don't know exactly what that's going to be yet. But I live at 1030 Sunflower Trail. We moved there in October, November of 2018. We wanted to buy Bob's house and we couldn't. I'm sorry. I told you that, right? We like Bob. He can still, he can stay in his house next door to our house. Yeah, I'm just going to use this time to talk about Sunset Valley and how much we love Sunset Valley. How about that? So we have been here six and a half years and we've had, in that time, we brought one child with us. We added two additional residents to the city while we have been here. Those, those residents are named Lucy, who is seven, Hank is five, and Ruth is four. We currently have three German Shepherds. We had four German Shepherds very, for a few months. You may have seen Ross as our, primarily our dog walker. So Bear, who he has displayed on his arm, died last fall. And he was, if, if God was a dog, it was Bear. If you believe in God, if you don't believe in God, you can believe in Bear. So we have four, we had four German Shepherds. Last year Ross's brother died and we decided, and, and Bear was dying, so we decided to get two more German Shepherds because that's what one does when people die is you get more German Shepherds. And you're not, you don't make any more children because that, that lot has been closed. So we got two more German Shepherds. They're all rescues, all four. The younger two are now a little over one. They are not from the same litter, but they're best friends. And then we've got Molly, our old dog. So all that is to say is we live, we bought this house in 2018 because at the time we lived in northeast Austin, almost to Flugerville, and I was commuting to Westlake. And for a lot of reasons that I won't get into here, I did not want to live in Westlake. I wanted to live in Sunset Valley, which we actually discovered at a baby shower on Lone Oak about six months before that. And we were like, oh, this is probably the best place to live. And honestly, at the time, it was the only house that we could afford that was within 15 to 20 minutes of my job in Westlake. And luckily, the inventory was, it was easy. It was pretty easy to buy that house. We thought at the time, having only one child, we knew we were going to have more, that it was way too big. And it is a big house. It's 3,500 square feet. The problem is that it is all upstairs, like practically the entire house is upstairs. The downstairs is one of those layouts that just like boggles the mind if you live with more than four people. And given that like we have five people, three very large dogs, who are going to live a very long time, we hope. We also often have grandparents over and our little kids' friends over. We are definitely those people who are like, don't go play video games at your friend's house. Tell your friends to come here and I'll give them a popsicle kind of people. So all that is to say is that we really like it here. We also really like our neighbors, many of whom decided to come on their own volition. They have not been bribed, though they have been told. They have been told that if I like you, and you know what that means, you're just going to have to take that on a handshake and a wink and a smile. If I like you, now that the pool has been permitted, we can tell everybody that we're building a pool. You can come to the pool. It's basically going to be a community pool. There's a couple of rules. One, daylight hours. Don't sneak up on me in the dark. Wear clothes and bring your own banana or whatever. So, uh, that's it. We'll just, we'll just call my public comment an introduction to the Ponder family. And we would love to have more covered patio because of climate change and it's really freaking hot. And we would also love to have a pool cabana with a bathroom because of the layout of our house is really dumb. Thank you.
I would like to know if I can use my comments as one introduction now. And when we go to agenda number six, then that would be the topic I would like to do also, my comments at that time, if it's possible.
I think it's okay.
Okay.
As, as long as it's not pertaining to the exact case that we're going to be discussing. It's more general comment.
That, that would go as, as a general.
Your name and your address, please.
Yeah. My name is Alfonso Carmona and I live in 1038 Sunflower. When I came to Austin, eh, we were living in different places. And one time, my wife, she brought me to Sunset Valley. I was driving and I saw so, so narrow the streets. And I saw in, in one street horses. And I said, oh, I don't know how we would be living here. But little by little, my wife, she convinced me. And it was very difficult. It was very, very difficult because I used to be very happy in, in my other house. And when I came here, she said, well, we'll be new. And look, they are special in that place. The rules, forget it. You cannot do nothing because you have to follow the rules. Well, after we made the deal, I was asking for a lot of papers. So my first point was papers, papers, and more papers with the developers. When I came, was important because in one moment I say, well, this is my house and will be forever. Why? Because in another place, when I tried to put a little fence, they, they, they gave it to me a copy and they say, this is the ordinance. I was living in, in Westlake. And they said, this is the ordinance from this place. You cannot put that fence. Why? No, it's my house. No, you cannot put that. And they are the papers. So I didn't put that fence. When I was here in 2015, they started with the, the, the police. And they say, they, they want to have new buildings for public works and the police. Well, but they don't have more imperious cover. How they will be doing that? So we start a big, big battle, big, big battle. So at that time, I was checking for all my papers. So when we start fighting, because we start fighting with the city, they say, no, you cannot go to our buffer. No, no, you have more than 100 and 100, you have 230 feet from that house to this building. We don't care. We have 130 feet as a buffer close to the property. And if you want to have another building as a city or police, you need to have another additional. And if you want to have another building as a city or police, you need to have another additional buffer. So, we start fighting and it took almost one year. And at that time, I understood that the rules, they were important. And the city, I was surprised because the city followed the rules. So, how some citizens, then we start fighting against the city. And we have a lot of interest because you have another two neighborhoods. So, what, what was important, and I gave it to them that credit, that they respect the rules. And for me, that is so important. Because in the way that I saw this, and I will do my discussion later, was totally different than it is now. So, when we came, my wife, she came and nothing was here, nothing in the village, nothing. And later, they put a sign, new village, soon they will be here. And she was crazy for that place. And we came. So I would like to resume at this moment, then we follow the rules. They gave it to me papers where they say, this is the house that you purchased. And all of this as a whole is 18%. Because at that time, you cannot go partial. You have to use as a whole unit. And that was the 18%. So, please, I would like then, we will go in the same way. And I appreciate then, I, I am agreeing with all the neighbors. I love the kids. When they were building another swimming pool in another place inside of the neighborhood, I was so happy. But when we start growing and growing and growing, this is where I have problems for impervious cover in the property. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we are going to approve the minutes from, no?
Well, you all may choose to elect a chair for this evening. Or you can table, I, I can.
I move to table item number three until we have everyone here. Is that okay? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
And commissioners, just, if we can just confirm, you, you have done a great job so far, Commissioner Versace. But if, you all need to just select a chair to chair this meeting this evening.
Oh, to chair the meeting?
Yes, yes.
Oh. I'm not doing a great job. Okay, by default.
By default, there you go, by acclamation, because no one else wants to do it, right?
Okay, fantastic.
Great.
So, we, we are going to table the election of the chair and vice chair. And we're going to elect me the temporary chair today.
Got it.
Okay. Number four, consider approval of the minutes from the November 20th. Do we have anyone to move to approve the minutes?
I move to approve.
Second, all in favor? Okay, conduct a public hearing and consider the zoning commission recommendation to the city council. So we are going to be making a yes or no recommendation to the city council.
Correct.
To consider this or to approve this? I want to be very clear.
It is, it is a land development code amendment relating to fencing.
Yes.
And so you will be recommending to city council whether they adopt the amendment or, or you can recommend denial of the proposed code amendment.
Okay, let's, let's open this up for discussion with the community first and then with the commissioners, or can we?
Staff presentation first.
Staff presentation, wonderful.
Carolyn's gonna, Carolyn's gonna take this one. And it was recommended by the Planning and Environmental Committee.
Yes, wonderful, I know.
So, good evening, commissioners. So this is a, an amendment to section 150.106 of the Land Development Code. And it's related to wildlife and child-friendly fencing. So, in 2024, the Planning and Environmental Committee had recommended some changes. I know there were some questions regarding some of the items in that. We've made some changes and we are submitting now these new changes. So this is a code amendment that would define fences as an accessory use. And it reduces the use of certain components that we see in fencing that makes them dangerous to children and wildlife. And generally, that is spikes and extensions that go above the horizontal bar. There have been cases as close as, it was either Georgetown or Round Rock, of a child getting stuck and obfuscating on a fence because those spikes, their head and neck can fit right through there. So it's to keep that and probably, I might be one of the only people in this building who's had to pull a deer off of fences in Sunset Valley because they get caught on those fences. They damage them and break their legs in those cases. And they have to be euthanized and removed from that. So, so it is, it's, these are just changes to help reduce the use of those spikes and ornamental pieces that go above the horizontal bar. So, this doesn't affect current and existing fences. There's kind of a blank in there. And so whatever the effective date is, that's the effective date of this. It doesn't require everybody to go and get rid of their fences. It would require that if they're going to replace 50% of their fence, it would require then that, that the entire fence comes into compliance. And so we have the language there, very similar in language to what the city of Austin has for this as well. So most fencing contractors would be very familiar with this. It is mostly, you know, not, no spike pickets, no vertical pickets, no razor wire, no barbed wire. And if you have chain link, it uses knuckle salvage, which is the big chain link that kind of links together versus the twisty tops on top of the chain link. Swimming pool barriers obviously will always comply with standards for pools and spas. So this is what the Planning and Environmental Committee has put forward for a request to change and make this part of the code so that we have safe fencing going forward.
I have a question about section E and number four. Do we currently have historic design standards in place in the city?
Uh, no.
I move to strike that.
Okay, we can strike all of, all of that. That whole piece is gone.
And then my second question, if you don't mind, is there are certain areas of the city such as the Tony Burger parking lot, which I know has quite a bit of barbed wire and dangerous equipment around it. Is there anything in the language that would protect children from dangerous equipment? In which case, we need things like barbed wire?
So actually, there is because I believe this doesn't apply to the non-residential use. So for, for businesses and things where we're gonna have equipment and things like that. For example, if the water plant was operational as a water plant, we would have to have barbed wire. So, so it does not require, it does not apply to non-residential use for that. So the Burger Center, protecting all that crazy equipment and stuff they have over there, would still, would still have that. And same with the city, if we needed it for something of that nature or any of the businesses.
Does anyone else have anything to add? Any commissioner? No?
No.
Do we move to approve this?
You can, just, just to make sure, you can ask if there's any members of the public that wish to speak. I don't know if there are, but.
Are there any questions or concerns from the community? No? Okay, motion to approve? All in favor?
Yes, all.
Okay, let's hope we don't have any impaled deer from now on.
Yeah.
Commissioner, just remember to, our chair, just remember to ask for a motion just to make sure to get a second. Yes. So let's, let's just redo the voting.
Who would like to give the motion to approve?
I would to approve.
Okay. And Russell's going second. So all in favor? Okay. Great job, P and E. Yes. Okay, this is the next item on the agenda where we are conducting a public hearing. And it looks like we have our first comment at the podium. So go ahead and introduce yourself.
Chairman Chair, I'm Joey Restovin, the Development Services Manager for the city of Sunset Valley. Item six is a discussion and possible recommendation on the rezoning of the property located at 1030 Sunflower Trail from planned unit zoning or PUD zoning to PUD zoning to change the condition of zoning under section 150.064 of the Land Development Code. The applicant is specifically requesting an additional 761 square feet of impervious cover and a reduction of the side setback from 15 to 12 feet. A little bit of background, in the mid 1990s, the city was involved in a lawsuit with the J.D. Weaver family regarding the 280-acre Weaver tract located over here for the most part at 290 and Brody. On September 30, 1996, the city council approved a resolution pursuant to memorandum of understanding that laid out a settlement agreement between the family and the city and a, specifically a partnership involved with the family, a company called Walter Southwest. Fast forward nine years later, in March, on March 9th of 2005, the city council approved, as anticipated in the settlement agreement, the PUD zoning for the 35.275-acre tract that we now call the Villas of Sunset Valley. The PUD allowed for smaller lots, greater impervious cover, reduced setbacks, and other modifications to the Land Development Code. And the city received title for land that is now the green belt in the city facilities that are, that we're in right now, as well as the property behind us. What is PUD zoning? PUD zoning, according to our Land Development Code, section 150.235, I'm paraphrasing here, is to encourage innovative subdivision or site design that provides for, that promotes superior development. PUDs are a common land use tool throughout the country. They basically allow for a developer to receive flexibility from the existing city code. And in exchange for that, the city receives things that it cannot otherwise require because of restrictions on what's known as contract zoning. When considering a PUD, the nature of each proposal for a PUD may require, under proper circumstances, departure from codes and ordinances. The adoption of a PUD, establishing, the adoption of a PUD district shall constitute authority for flexible planning to the extent that it is needed. And wherever the code is not modified within the PUD, the standard code would still apply. Before approving a PUD, the city council shall determine that meets all the goals and objectives of the code regarding PUDs. Those include that the development is equal to or superior to development that would occur under standard ordinance requirements. The PUD is in harmony with the purposes, goals, objectives, and standards of the comprehensive plan. It will not have an adverse effect upon adjacent properties with regard to traffic, parking, or other things relating to the public health, safety, and welfare. The proposed PUD shall be adequately served by public facilities, including drainage, public safety, et cetera. And the proposed PUD shall be constructed and designed in a way so as not to dominate by scale, massing the immediate neighboring properties or interfere with the development of existing properties in accordance with any zoning district. Specifically with regard to impervious cover, which is the main issue here, the maximum impervious cover for the entire property within a PUD must conform to the impervious cover limitations of each of the water quality zones for that property. PUDs are not required to conform to any per-lot requirement regarding impervious cover. In this particular PUD, the city did allow greater density than would otherwise be required by the code. As I'm sure you all are familiar, the city has a one-acre minimum lot size. The lots within the Villas are significantly smaller than that. The city received approximately 2.7 acres for right-of-way, the roadways, as well as five lots that were within the subdivision. Those five lots totaled 24 acres out of the 36-acre subdivision. The 24 acres are conservation area that mitigates the greater density impervious cover that are allowed on the remaining 11 acres of the existing subdivision. The PUD took what we call a bucket approach. It allowed for a total of 225,635 square feet of impervious cover, including roadways and alleys. And it was not allocated on an individual per-lot basis. Rather, as the developer sold the lots to the home builder, impervious cover was removed, was removed, was removed from that, from that total. However, the bucket approach can have, well, one, it can be difficult to administer from a, from a city standpoint because you have to keep track of how much is used. It also makes it difficult, as the case here, for some homeowners to try to figure out exactly how much impervious cover they're allowed. Anticipating this, the PUD talked about mandated that prior to every home sale, every potential buyer was notified of how much impervious cover they have on the property. And post-sale, that there be a restricted covenant recorded that, that stated how much impervious cover was allowed. I cannot find evidence that this was followed in every single case for every lot that was developed on the Villas. As a matter of fact, one, one restricted covenant I did find actually simply restates the impervious cover limit within the PUD, which speaks to the whole subdivision. So it's not very, not very helpful. There have been attempts by the staff that we, we have found and that the applicant has found over time to try to account for the impervious cover and how much was used for every lot. However, unfortunately, at this time, I cannot say exactly how much existing impervious cover is within the PUD that would honestly require as-built surveys for every property because properties have had things added to them over time. As I said, this property owner is requesting additional 761 square feet of impervious cover, reducing, I'm sorry, I said side setback before. I believe it's the rear setback from the existing 15-foot requirement in the PUD to 12 feet. In addition, the current, the applicant currently has a permit, a live permit, and they're currently under construction building in addition to the house in the rear, as well as a new swimming pool. The staff recommendation is to deny the requested zoning. In 2005, when the council did approve the PUD, it made 12 findings, including that the PUD would result in superior development that would occur within the standard development as required under the Land Development Code. The Villas PUD did allow greater impervious cover within the subdivision, but overall resulted in conformity with the city's impervious cover regulations by the dedication of the 24 acres of green space. So in other words, impervious cover that would have otherwise gone on the, the green belt and trails was transferred to the subdivision. So the remaining 11 acres has a higher impervious cover than what the city would normally allow. However, overall, when you account for the green belt as well as the development, it still complies with the city's overall 18% impervious cover limit. Indeed, the code in the section that lays out the parameters for approving a PUD does mandate, as I read earlier, that the overall impervious cover comply with the code. So with the green belt as well as the development, it does comply with that section 150.235(c)(6). At this time, the applicant has not proposed any mitigation or remediation for the impervious cover. They have intended, an intention to use rainwater harvesting in the future. However, in a follow-up letter to us after the staff report came out, they stated that those discussions would occur only if the zoning application were approved. So the staff is not recommending the impervious cover section of the request. However, staff has, does have no objection to the reduction in the rear setback. The code, as y'all know, requires findings prior to the commission or city council approving a zoning case. I will say that in this case, the findings are a little bit awkward in the sense that they anticipate a zoning change. And while this is technically a zoning change, what we're changing is a condition of zoning, a specific regulation within the PUD, which is a unique type of zoning. So these findings really anticipate a, a change in land use. You know, someone going from commercial to, well, that's the highest we have, but from office to commercial or maybe from single-family to office. So a lot of times, it addresses like land use issues. Land use is not the issue here. It's an existing single-family house that will continue to be a single-family house. So some of these findings are not irrelevant. So I'd like to walk through real quick the findings and what the staff take on the findings is with regard to this request. The first one is that the proposed change in zoning classification is consistent with the goal, standards, and policies of the city's comprehensive plan. The staff position is that the additional impervious cover and possible precedent for additional requests conflict with the following goals from the comprehensive plan. That the, the, to preserve and restore the community's natural resources and native biodiversity, to protect and improve water quality, to mitigate for potential damages from flooding, prolonged droughts, severe weather and wildfires, to promote sustainable development and redevelopment that enhances the city's unique character of its natural resources and the protection, protection of the Edwards Aquifer. Second finding is that significant unanticipated changes have occurred that make development within the current land use maps unlikely and inappropriate. Again, this request is, is not proposing to change the land use. The proposed classification would allow uses that are reasonable and not incompatible with surrounding properties. And any minor incompatible affected uses will be adequately mitigated. Again, this request does not change the existing land use. The zoning classification change request is no greater than the minimum requirement to allow for the reasonable use of land. Staff position is that the existing PUD regulations do allow for the reasonable use of land as a single-family residence. The proposed change in zoning classification is in the community's best interest in terms of public health, safety, and welfare. Staff position is that the additional impervious cover beyond the agreement that was made in 2005 with approval of PUD ordinance and more than is allowed. in 2005 with approval of PUD ordinance and more than is allowed under standard zoning is not in the community's best interest in terms of public health, safety, and welfare. Impervious cover limits are meant to protect the public's health, safety, and welfare by protecting water quality and mitigating flooding. Another finding is that development will likely occur as a result of proposed changing, change in zoning will be adequately served by utilities. Again, no change in land use here, the site does have adequate utilities. Development like, another finding, development likely to occur as a result of proposed zoning classification can be adequately served by the following services, police, fire, safety, police, fire, and EMS. Again, there is no change in the land use, they are all adequately served right now by the public services. Development will likely occur as a result, as a result of the proposed zoning change will not result in traffic conditions, vehicular circulation that jeopardizes the city's public health, safety, and welfare environment, or the vehicular traffic goals and policies of this land of the comprehensive plan. Again, this request is not resulting in a change in land use. Development likely, will likely occur as a result of proposed zoning change will not disrupt the existing land uses of the facility, and the proposed change does not change the existing land uses. And finally, the proposed change in zoning classification and development likely occur as a result of the proposed zoning classification will not negatively affect the values of home and properties in the immediate vicinity. Again, this is not a proposed change in the land use, it is a proposed change in the impervious cover and the setbacks. One issue, so, in summary, the staff recommendation is based upon the fact that in 2005, the city made a deal with Bill Walters, the developer of the property, that was working with the family, to allow for greater density, greater impervious cover, reduce setbacks, denser development, in exchange for the city receiving all the green belt that you see behind us. The overall result of that was compliance with the city code with regard to the PUD section that required the 18% impervious cover. The applicant, in a follow-up after they received the staff recommendation, did ask us to forward an email to you all, which we have done, and the applicant states his belief that the, that the original calculation, that they gave credit for the land that was being, the impervious cover that was being donated to the city and transferred over to the development, should have included an additional 6.6 acres, let's see, 6.49 acres of water quality transition zone that were left out of the calculations. There is a, and the applicant maintains that otherwise, 14% of impervious cover would have been allowed on that, and that in fact, that impervious cover should have been transferred to the development back in 2005. Staff disagrees with that. The reason is that within the Land Development Code, it does state that if you have one property that's within the water quality transition zone, that has one no usable portion of it is located in the uplands property, in other words, the whole of the lot is in the water quality transition zone. In those particular instances, the staff, for residential use, may grant basically what's, for lack of a better word, an administrative variance of up to 14% impervious cover, as long as it meets those conditions, but it is otherwise unusable. That is, a decision is made on a case-by-case basis by the staff when they come in. There is not a blanket 14% impervious cover allowed within the water quality transition zone. The code actually states no impervious cover is allowed in the transition zone unless the staff makes a finding that you can otherwise not use the property, and in which case they're capped at a maximum of 14%. So, it was, in staff's opinion, proper that in 2005, you cannot transfer something that does not exist. And so, the developer was not otherwise, would not have otherwise been allowed to build on that transition zone, and therefore, no impervious cover was transitioned from that portion of the land that was accounted for the impervious cover moving from here over to the subdivision. So, Commissioner, it's up to you if you'd like to hear from everybody. Next, we would go to the applicant, as well as those in favor, and then we'll hear from those who are opposed, and then a rebuttal from the applicant. If you'd like, I can answer questions now, or we can do that all at the end after you hear from everybody.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Jerry now, or would you like to wait until the end of the discussion? No? No? You're excused.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. So, now, we're going to move to the public hearing, we're going to hear from the applicants first, and then we move to the public hearing. The questions for the applicant will be reserved until after public hearing comments.
If that's how you'd like to, you're welcome.
So, the applicants may make their, their case, then we'll have public comments, and then the commissioners will discuss, and then you'll be called back up. And for rebuttal comments, if we have questions for you.
Sounds good. And do we get to ask questions of city staff at all?
Yeah, do we get to ask questions?
Because that was a, more than four minutes.
The questions are usually asked by the commissioners, but you may make your presentation, and if you would like to request the commission make question, submit questions to the staff, either at this meeting or a later date, then you may do so.
Okay, thank you. Hi, everybody, I'm Ross Ponder, and I don't mean to dredge up bad business. The Weaver settlement was a bad deal when it was done, and us bringing it up again makes us really unpopular. I just want to leave that out there. Lead with, we stand at a unique crossroads in addressing what has been, from its inception, a deeply flawed settlement. The 1996 Weaver Agreement and subsequent 2005 PUD created a legacy that satisfied virtually no one except the Weaver family and Mercedes Homes, the latter of which abandoned its responsibilities to homeowners and the city when it filed for bankruptcy in 2009, leaving incomplete documentation and unrecorded covenants in its wake. The history has created a situation where the current residents of the Villas, none of whom had any representation during the original PUD negotiations, find themselves bound by inconsistently applied restrictions with significant documentation gaps. The impervious cover calculations contain, am I on?
No.
Oh, what?
Can you do that picture?
Is it on? Oh, there we go, okay. Okay. Let's see, where was I? The impervious cover calculations contain a demonstrable mathematical error where six and a half acres of the property were completely excluded from calculations. Had this land been included at even the standard 14% rate eligibility, each of the 52 properties would have received exactly 761 square feet of additional impervious cover, precisely the amount in the amendment. What we have before us is not merely another zoning request, it is an opportunity to correct a historical injustice through a minor adjustment that represents just .00066 acres of additional hardscape on a property that already has one of the lowest impervious cover percentages in the neighborhood. While other properties in the PUD routinely exceed 50% coverage and receive accommodations through vastly simpler processes, we have been subjected to changing standards and procedural inconsistencies. The unique circumstances here, a property backing to a green belt and water quality pond rather than other homes, comprehensive mitigation measures proposed by the applicant, and well-documented calculation errors in the original PUD demand thoughtful reconsideration of the staff recommendation. By rectifying these historical oversights, we can restore equity to a family who simply wishes to create the same kind of living space their neighborhoods already enjoy. And I have a lot of questions about the staff memo, I kind of broke them out into five buckets. Legal authority and clarification of standards, data management and monitoring questions, environmental considerations and context, comprehensive plan alignment, inquiry, and calculation considerations, and administrative review. Comprehensive plan interpretation. I, could you please help me understand which specific provisions in the comprehensive plan or 761 square feet request conflicts with? I'm seeking clarity on where the plan establishes absolute per lot impervious cover limitations within an approved PUD. PUD redistribution consideration. Given that ordinance 050309 establishes the Villa's total impervious cover at 225,635,000 square feet and weigh per lot caps, I'm interested in understanding the basis for declining a redistribution that maintains this total. Was legal consulted regarding this interpretation? Process evolution. I noticed that between 2009 and 2022, at least four properties, 1022, 1028, and 1058 and 1062 Sunflower Trail, received similar relief through border adjustment variances. Could you share what policy developments occurred between 2022 and 2024 that led to our application being directed to a zoning amendment after three variance application submissions? What factors determined this different procedural pathway compared to our neighbors? Data management and monitoring questions. One is about impervious cover tracking. The comprehensive plan, section 403A, references, quote, "a current impervious cover inventory for the entire city," unquote. Would you be able to share the latest data fulfilling this mandate? In the absence of comprehensive data, I'm curious about the methodology used to determine the Villa's remaining allocation. I created a spreadsheet off of information the city gave me from what was provided by the builder. Performance measurement. Regarding section 403C's monitoring mandate, could you outline what monitoring protocols or metrics the city has implemented? How are these findings incorporated into the recommendation? Documentation considerations. Since the staff report acknowledges incomplete restrictive covenant filings, when was this compliance gap identified? What measures were taken with the developer regarding the issue? Given the documentation challenges, I'm interested in understanding how determinations about potential cap exceedance were made. Current utilization assessment. What is the current utilization percentage of the 225,635 square feet of the PUD allowance? Has there been a recent comprehensive inventory since initial development? Section two, environmental considerations and context. Our application included commitments to rainwater harvesting, rain gardens, and permeable foundations. Could you share the city staff's evaluation of these proposals against LID standards? What additional mitigation measures would be considered sufficient? Precedent evaluation. Regarding the precedent concern, approximately how many Villas lots currently have less than 51% impervious cover? If similar amendments were approved for all eligible lots, would that total still remain with the 225,635 square feet cap? Site-specific analysis. Given our property's unique position backing to a green belt and water quality pond, has there been any hydrological assessment of the actual impact of an additional 761 square feet in this specific context? What factors support treating this location similarly to properties surrounded by other homes? Green belt consideration. The city received almost 24 acres of permanent green space through the Villas PUD agreement. How does this valuation of this conservation achievement factor into considering a .00066 acre hardscape adjustment? Comprehensive plan alignment. Section three, family recreation. Could you explain how a code-compliant backyard for a family with three children might be inconsistent with the plan goals, quote, "to enhance quality of life through family-oriented recreation"? Native biodiversity, our commitment to rainscape and zariscape rebate programs doesn't appear to be mentioned or addressed in the memo. What was the city's, city's zariscape rebate matrix consulted before no mitigation conclusion? How might our proposal affect biodiversity goals? Watershed protection. Could you provide any quantitative assessment for our proposed rainwater capture might affect pollutant load compared to existing turf runoff? What metrics were used to determine watershed impact? Context sensitive development. With neighboring properties already exceeding 50% impervious cover under board adjustment variances and initial applications, could you clarify why 51.5% would be considered incompatible with neighborhood character? What criteria define compatibility in this context? Next section, calculation considerations and administrative review. In the historical calculations, records indicate 6.49 acres of water quality transition lawn were excluded from impervious cover calculations, which would have provided exactly 761 square feet more per property. Has had, has the staff had an opportunity to verify this calculation? What remedies might be available short of case-by-case amendments? Equitable treatment considerations. Our property currently has one of the lowest impervious cover percentages in the neighborhood at 37.8. Could you share the factors that support different impervious cover thresholds for properties within the same PUD? Also, stakeholder engagement. Could you provide information about discussions regarding alternative compliance paths on bill mitigation, fee, and lieu, and what range of options were considered during the review process? Transparency request. Would it be possible to make the staff working file, including draft documents, available under the Public Information Act before council's final action? And on property value assessment and finding 10, what methodology did staff use to determine that home renovation with new landscaping and pool would have no impact on property values? Was any real estate expertise consulted in making this determination, whether a broker price opinion or a licensed real estate appraiser?
Apparently, my fingers aren't warm enough to light up the light or something. It's so cold in here. Thank you for that. We are going to open it up to public comments at this point. Does anyone want to approach the mic? Please state your name and address.
Can you hear me? I really don't need this. Roy Green, 1062 Sunflower Trail. I'm sorry, but I like to keep things simple. If this individual came to you in 2022, and we're now in 2025, what are we doing? Are we trying to get the no? We're trying to get the yes. Because I know when I went through this, there was things that were uncovered that was supposed to be fixed and amended three years before I even came here to discuss my situation, and it wasn't done. So, my first question is, has that been done? As far as impervious cover, amendment been put into place for all of our properties? And I'm just talking out loud. But the other piece is, I would say, let's work together because we're all in this community, and if we go down the path together, we will be successful. But if we go trying to battle against each other, or have other individuals calling and doing things, we won't win. And then, the only thing that's going to happen is, it's going to make what's a great place to live be a bad place to live. And since I've been here since 2012, what I can say, there's only been a few instances where that has not happened. And I'm only here today to say, let's work together instead of working against each other, trying to get to no. Let's get the yes and do what's right. That's all I have to say.
So, my name's Bob O'Brien, live at 1028, next door to them. And as I said, potentially the biggest impacted, although I'm not sure I see a big impact, maybe a little more experience with their dogs, but probably not more than that. I'm an ex-military officer, my wife's retired military, I'm a 25-year-retired federal employee. That's pertinent in the fact that I know about regulations. I know about rules, I know about lining things up and crossing the T, all that sort of stuff. As I listen to a city presentation, as I listen to the applicant's presentation, I don't think anybody can track what those rules are. I mean, it's beyond comprehension what the definitions are, what the timelines are, who agreed to what when, whether the impervious cover regulations on my house is the same on Ross and Sarah's house, is the same down Roy's house. They don't appear to be the same, and it's not clear they're being tracked. Which, which brings me to the point of a neighborhood, and the point of government, really, is to make the place a good place to live, and a safe place to live. So, I'm in favor of not having animals or kids hung on fences. But it doesn't seem to me that anything that they want to do with their property makes the- the neighborhood unsafe, that it makes the neighborhood inhospitable. I can sit on my deck and look out on, I don't know how many acres of wildland, whatever you want to call this out there. I enjoy that. That's part of why I bought the house. But it's unclear to me how 200, 700 feet of impervious cover will have any impact on any of those things. I like the idea of protecting the environment and the water. But I don't see how this amount of impervious cover is going to damage that in any way. And it seems like, my brain says I'm going to sound like a jerk, it's not my intention, but it sounds like when there's a, quote, "good reason" for the government to do things like pave over all of the parking lots and pave over the building here. I like the building, okay? I think I voted to the extent that we got to say, yes, we want this building and that building and all those things. I like those things. But in the name of, I don't know what to call it, the greater good of the city, it was apparently not a problem to generate that amount of impervious cover. It just doesn't make sense to get tied up in rules and regulations and think we're making it better over whatever little bit of square foot this is of impervious cover. It's a nice neighborhood. It's nice people. It doesn't make the neighborhood better. Thank you.
My name is Tanya Winch. I live with my husband Doug and our two dogs at 1035 Sunflower Trail. And I just have a question. Did I just turn it off with my voice? Okay. Where would we find our information on what the impervious cover is? Did it come with our title information? Do you, so wouldn't even know? Do we just come to you guys and say, hey, y'all, we want to know what our impervious cover is? How does someone who actually decides to buy a property here, I'm really truly asking out of curiosity, not to cause any problems? I'm sorry, I'm so.
I can answer that. I just built a house here.
Excellent.
So you hire a survey company and they calculate the impervious cover based on whether it's pier and beam or slab or whatever structures you have on the property. It's a very easy calculation.
So it's not something that you just get from the city when you purchase?
You don't automatically get it. If you purchase a home, you get a survey on your property and you request it as an additional line item typically, and it costs a little bit extra.
Gotcha.
If you get that on your survey.
And how the heck does a homeowner know to ask for that?
If they're planning on perhaps building more in the future, you can always order it later.
Okay.
That's just, as a homeowner, I know that that's how you can. When you purchase a home.
This really isn't a question and answer. It's supposed to be a public comment.
I got it, I got it. I just was wondering. I was wondering, because I guess my public comment is, as someone who purchased this house 10 years ago, I've wanted to do a bunch of stuff in our backyard, and everybody in the entire Villas always says, you can't. There's the impervious cover. You can't. And that's, I didn't know that. And I guess that's what I'm trying to say, is that it seems to me that it would be something that you would, as the person that's purchasing the house, be advised of. I didn't even know there was a thing called impervious cover. And that's also what I'm bringing up, is that it's like. And I agree with both Bob and Roy that we should just work together to the best of our ability. Thank you.
Thank you, Tanya. Anyone else like to speak?
Good evening. I'm Ariel Cloud. I live at 1038 Sunflower Trail. We are kind of those dinosaurs, and some of you remember us for our stand on impervious cover. So we are those dinosaurs. We actually bought our house way before this builder, whose name shall remain infamous in my memory forever since we had cracks at six months and they were out of business. So a bad, bad, bad situation. I'm sorry for anybody who bought in the Villas because that's what we've all had to deal with. But one thing that the builder did do, and I must give them credit for that, they did give you your survey with the impervious cover calculated, and they actually made you sign, right, with your initials. They also gave us a huge file of documentation on what all the rules and regulations were for Sunset Valley pertinent to what you could do and what you couldn't do. And I just happened to grab this page from my husband, who has a book over there, from June 19, 2006. It explains, it's an impervious cover notice. Obviously, the builder has the signed copy that we had to sign. It tells you what it is, what Sunset Valley does, what does a restriction on impervious cover mean. Each property has a predetermined allotment for each square foot of development. Can a homeowner in a deed restricted property get more impervious cover? There is little to no likelihood that additional impervious cover will be made available in the Villas. So I have that history and a lot of people who came in and bought a few years after, because remember, for those of you who've been in central Texas for four generations like I have, the cycle of boom and bust here is always and has been since I was a child, boom and bust, right, in real estate. So right after we bought our house, boom, everything plummeted, right? And nobody wanted to buy houses anymore. In fact, the builder was trying to do a fire sale to get rid of the last couple of structures that they had built. So having given you that, what we did realize, when we realized, wow, I'm so glad that we didn't have children anymore, we had an adult child, because we thought about that a lot. We went from a big house in Westlake with a big lot to a big house here with a very small lot. And me, wanting to really think about the environment and how great it was, I don't think I could have done it with a bunch of small children because it's very difficult. We have a very small dog, and that small dog alone generates enough, I won't even go into it, just to keep you trying to clip it up in the yard so it doesn't become a health hazard. So it's very difficult. I understand that, and I feel for my neighbors. One of the things that really, I've been trying to take this year off from kind of Sunset Valley politics, as my colleagues back there will tell you, just kind of chill in a little bit. But I happened to look at the agenda last weekend, I saw a thing that said, Villa's PUD zoning change. Well, that really went ding ding ding. Because, as y'all will remember, there is nothing to be more sacred than this buffer back here and the impervious cover. Anybody who doesn't think it's important should take a drive around South Lamar, North Lamar, and look what it's like to have everything built right up to the sidewalk, if in fact there even is a sidewalk in that section where you are. So I never want to see Sunset Valley look like that. This is a little bubble. It's a jewel. Yes, there are a lot of things that we don't like, yes. And I've been a public employee in the past for many, many years, and I know staff, sometimes we mess up, and it's a thankless job, and all you can do is do your best and interpret and hold the line as best you can. But what I don't really understand is how we got here. How did we get to zoning change? Because I am vehemently opposed to anything called a zoning change for the PUD. Why? Because you open the door to stick that foot in, and the next person who comes along can justify what they want to do because, oh, you did a zoning change for this. So I think Sunset Valley has a process that's called variance, right? And there's a board of adjustment. And if the variance is not given or given, that happens then, and I'm sorry, guys, staff, I've been where you sit, and sometimes you have to do the hard no. And yes, sometimes it gets litigious, and I'm sorry. But as long as you're basing off real information, right, and real ordinances, then you can do that. But what you can't, what we really shouldn't do is, let's pull it around to here and now, let's make a zoning change. I don't support a zoning change for the reasons I just said. We have a beautiful thing here. It is very difficult on our street. Whoever came up with that development plan really wasn't very smart. When you build streets that are so narrow, you can't even get emergency vehicles down them, that's not good. When you build mailboxes that there's no place to drive in to get the mail, to park, and then you're blocking traffic, not good. But that's what we have, which is why your decisions today and staff's decisions on what to forward and not forward, and the council's decision on where to hold the line, is so important because your decision today could be somebody's headache 10 years down the line. So this is very hard, and it's always very hard, believe me, to go against what most people want on your street, in your community, in your city, whatever. But we do have an ordinance, and this is not the place to be changing the ordinance, not in zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Ariel.
I think this is my public comment time on item number six. I'm Sarah Ponder, 1030 Sunflower Trail. I hadn't intended to go with this particular order, but I'm so glad that I did because I think I can answer a few of the questions that were brought up. So staff brought up that we cannot state the actual amount of impervious cover that the Villa's PUD currently actually has. So I'm just going to make that very clear. The number is not known, and I'm pretty sure that that is not in question. Everybody knows that the number is not known. I'm going to hop down to piggyback on what Bob said about how there's like 192 pages in this zoning, today's, like, whatever packet of information is like 200 pages long, in addition to all of the city code. Bob is 100% correct that, like, you would have to have four PhDs to actually know what is going on here. Ross almost has a PhD, which is why our amendment was 34 pages long, just so you know. Next point, why 761 square feet? Honestly, it's just because he did the math, and we didn't actually think that the zoning change was just for 1030 Sunflower Trail. We had been, we attempted to go through the variance process three different times. We never actually got to present a variance. So I don't know if you were aware of that. We would have loved to have just gone through the variance process. We've been trying to do that for a very, 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 very long time. Another neighbor brought up a very valid question, which is the same question that we had had for a very long time. How much impervious cover does one have? Well, you see that thing, there's that little chart that says impervious cover 2779? Someone brought up, when did we start asking about this? Well, we started asking about it in 2022, which was three years ago, and we have spent many emails and many hours back and forth because what you would think is that simple answer is not the answer. That's the problem. The problem is that that 2779 doesn't currently map onto what is allowed impervious cover, what is exempted impervious cover. It doesn't properly calculate, like, the walkways and the driveways, and just suffice it to say that when, nobody actually knows. Nobody knows. Like, there's just, it's just kind of, nobody knows. It's approximate. Roy had the kind of a similar issue a couple of years ago, and so since then, they added this thing where you could have like 200 more square feet of impervious cover in the Villas, but it was exempted impervious cover. And so that all gets again to say, at what Tanya was asking, is, well, how do you figure it out? Well, the way you're supposed to figure it out, apparently, is you go to the city and you get that file. Our file was missing. And as far as I know, it's still missing, or I haven't been told otherwise. What?
No inspections.
Yep. No building docs, no inspections, no nothing. So again, you could, yes, pay a surveying company, but then, since you don't know how many square feet are in the putt, you still don't actually have the answer. This is all just very silly. So yes, at the end of the day, a variance would have been great. We didn't get that opportunity. We were told to come to zoning because staff told us that that's the only way we could do this. Back and forth for months and months, that doesn't sound right because that's not what everybody else did. Everybody else just did a variance. So, finally, I do think that to be actually equitable, given that there are no clear rules and there is no clear documentation, that it would be equitable to just give every house in the Villa 761 square feet. That seems fair to me, and it seems normal. In practicality, there's not even that many houses that could use even half of that because of just the way the lots are. Our house is a little square box compared to all the rest, and if you just look at it on Google Maps, you can figure out that there's like maybe between three and six houses out of the 52 that could even use more than the 200 already exempted in their space. So practically, nobody's talking about the green belt, nobody's talking about commercial development, nobody's talking about anything nuts. So I hope you pass it.
Thank you, Sarah.
Melissa Gonzalez, 26, Reese. I think this is a very interesting discussion. I was here when the development was going in. I've followed it for how it is. I'm always concerned with individual rule changes because I care about water quality. I'm in a part of the city that has 18% impervious cover, but it still makes the back end of my lock unusable. I can't even get to it or do anything with it. But that's kind of what happened. I did watch when we developed here, and I watched people make sure we had 18% impervious cover on this property. We did things to mitigate the Martin houses, to make sure that we followed the rules. I watched the very passionate fight that Ariel and Alfonso led to make sure that everything on this property was done by the books, that if we were going to hold rules to other places, that the city was going to follow them. And it was a very impassioned discussion. So I think we try to be fair. Everybody agrees that that was a difficult development with the Villas and that it was a huge risk. But I'm fairly educated, and I'm still not totally clear, and I would look forward to the commissioners clearing up and staff clearing up exactly what's in front of us because I'm personally not quite clear. And I want us to all understand what's exactly in front of us today because we have some real theoretical ones, like the whole restructuring of the Villas on impervious cover is what I'm hearing discussed, but I don't think that's what's in front of us. Maybe I'm wrong, but I don't think that's what's in front of us. So I guess I would like to see laid out, what is the question in front of us because that's what we can answer, you know? And I know that staff is probably working off of some document that they believe they can give a number to. Because then we had problems because we had problems in the development of the Villas. We had problems in the development of the Meadows, where we said, we can't do things. So we made ways to do a few more things. And they are general to the whole city. We got extra storage buildings somewhere, we got extra walkways somewhere. We did things to try to ease the constriction. to try to ease the constriction. Now, everybody's going to want more. I want more. When I paid architects who ought to know better to design what I did on my property, they designed it to five feet setbacks. I paid money for an architect to do that. It won't fly in Sunset Valley. I still paid the money to the architect, but they didn't bother to check with Sunset Valley. So we have all these other things, and we can make noise about all these other things, but I think it's really important to lay out why people couldn't get a variance, what documents the staff is working on where they have the information that we're proceeding from, and then while all of these other discussions might be interesting, are they relative to the question in front of us? Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa.
My wife, she showed you the papers that we signed when we purchased the house. They gave it to us, that declaration and covenants. They gave it to me a lot of papers at that time, but for me, it was important to understand how to calculate the impervious cover. So at that time, and they, they gave it to me was, in these papers, they show you the 35 acres that you have in that lot, but from that, you have six acres, 6.20 something, that they are from the water quality transition zone. So in reality, we were working only with 27 acres. But later, we have roads and other areas for impervious cover that they didn't pertain to the houses. So as a math in algebra, they say, okay, it's irregular this lot. We will have 52 acres, 52 lots. Forty lots, they are 60 by 120 feet. That was the dimension. And the other, the other 12 lots, they were in the merril. And in the merril, they say they will have 35 feet front and 115 feet deep. So in that way, they calculate and they say, if I have this 12 and this 40, this is the maximum impervious cover that you can have. So it was until 2008 when they made this spreadsheet. And in that spreadsheet, you have each lot, and in each lot, the owner, and they have the area, the total area, and also the legal impervious cover. So we have these. The city has that. Sorry?
They don't have any.
Well, they have that. So if they have that, when I am reading, I understand. This is why it's important that we need to come here with the basis, and I came here with the basis. So I cannot, I cannot say, I don't know. Well, in 2005, was other people. 2006, maybe some of the owners, they are no first owners, they are second owners. So they need to go back to the other persons, then they sold their houses, and they didn't give it to them a binder. Because at this moment, it's hard for you. Why? As a commission, you have different neighborhoods, and you have an ordinance, not for a PUD. So you have at this moment to think in two ways. I agree that at this moment, we need to update these papers. And when we will update these papers, we will have a better idea. But these papers, they don't give it to us, then you will have a full lot, building, house, office, pool, I don't care, it's good for the kids, and et cetera. But the other things, 769 square foot is a lot. It's a lot because we are looking lots with two acres, then they don't have all of that square feet as a house. So until when, we will have our limit. And my wife, she came with a good point. When I came to Austin, was in 1967, no, 1977, and the streets and everything was so nice. I can go now to Lamar, as she say, wow, good planning from the city of Austin, that now they are building, building, building. And now, look, as I say, when I tried to participate for a city council, it's a jewel. Sunset Valley is a jewel, and we need to preserve that. As a good neighborhood, we need to be in that way, but we need to have some limits. We cannot go in excess, in my opinion. So I'm sorry if some people, they don't have that. And I don't try to, to say that the city employees, they are not doing their job, because they try to do their job, and always they try to do it that way. I think that at this moment, sometimes it's dangerous when you have somebody, then we provide information that is not true, or is not clear. This is bad. This is something that we need to correct, because we have frustrations when we came and, nobody, nobody home. When I will find, nobody, or something. In this case, we are doing business as a city, and the citizens, they need respect, that they need, they need to have the truth. Because if no, I am real, real surprised that nobody was familiar with these papers. So I don't try to, to go against something that is so nice. Last Sunday, I saw a girl, and she was talking, 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 because my dog, he was barking, barking, barking. And she said, woah, 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 woah. She complained about my dog, because my dog was bad. And I couldn't ask them, I'm sorry, I couldn't tell them that, but I saw the girl, and that was in my mind. Last week, Thursday, they told me about this, and I went to see my papers, and I saw all of these papers. And again, I don't believe that is, that is fair for other people that we live there, then they will build a house on the back, or a room, a swimming pool room with bathroom, et cetera, et cetera. Because if no, when I came here, I leased one warehouse, because they didn't allow me to set one warehouse in my house. And I still, at this moment, I pay every month, and since that time, $480. Come, it raises and raises. So if at this moment, they allow to build and to build, well, tomorrow I will have a warehouse, and I don't need to pay for outside.
Storage.
Storage. That's the storage that I have. So in that storage, they didn't allow me here since I came, and I follow orders. I didn't, I didn't question too much, because they gave it to me a paper, and in that paper say, you cannot have impervious cover. I know a little math also, and I can do all of that calculations, but this is not the criteria. The criteria was different. They didn't came with a 51%, 33% or something. They didn't use this criteria. They didn't use this criteria, that this is what I saw in that application. So I put back all of these, and I go with the criteria that they use, the developers and the people that they approve, the PUD. We have to work. We need to improve this now. I agree, but I disagree to have 769 square foot. Thank you.
Thank you, Alfonso. Okay, if there aren't any more public comments, we are going to move to commissioners' questions for staff, our discussion, right?
And I believe we did receive two written comments.
Two written comments.
I think Jerry's going to.
Oh, very good. Thank you, Jerry.
And then, and then he can be available for questions.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, we have received two emails about this case. I'd like to read them real quickly to you. The first one is from a gentleman named Michael Francis, who lives on Lone Oak Trail. He says, Dear members of the zoning commission, I'm ready to express my strong opposition to any proposed changes to the impervious cover restrictions and rear setback requirements for the property located at 1030 Sunflower Trail. These restrictions are part of the original development approval, and the developer accepted them as a condition moving forward. Allowing changes now would not only contradict the original agreement, but also set a continuing precedent that would be concerning. If such exceptions are granted, it is likely that other property owners and developers will seek similar variances, which could lead to gradual weakening of the established zoning protections in our community. I urge the commissioners to uphold the current set of requirements for 1030 Sunflower Trail to preserve the integrity of the development process. Thank you for your consideration. We received a second email from a gentleman named Michael Moore, I believe who lives in the Villas. He says, I see no reason for granting a 600 square foot variance for this lot, claiming that your neighbors have done it. It is not legitimate justification. We have impervious regulate, impervious cover regulations for a reason, and we should enforce them or not. I am strongly opposed to this variance. Thank you for your consideration, Michael Moore. Those are the two written comments that we have received.
Thank you, Jerry.
And if I could address one thing real quick before I get to your questions, it has been brought up several times by the speakers, why we are here with the zoning change as opposed to a board of adjustment variance. And the answer is that a board of adjustment variance per the code, the job of the board of adjustment is to grant variances to the land development code. So if you are in a lot, you know, say over on Lone Oak, and you want to have a rear setback reduced, or to have more height, you go to the board of adjustment and you seek a variance. Within the Villas PUD, they are not seeking a variance from the code, rather they are seeking a modification to the ordinance. One way of looking at it is that the PUD ordinance is a mini land development code that applies to the Villas. It sets rules that are different than the general land development code that applies everywhere else. It's its unique set of rules, and to change those rules is not a variance to the code, rather it requires a modification to the ordinance that establishes the PUD.
Thanks for the clarification.
Can I ask a quick question? But in your, what are the results?
So one thing I think I'd like, I'm sorry, don't mean any disrespect, but I think that the questions should come from the commission. You know, if the commission has questions, I'm here to answer them, or if they have any questions of the people that are here.
Okay.
But I think that we should probably not have a town hall situation where everybody's asking questions of everybody else.
I understand. So right now, we're going to open it up to questions from the commissioners, and we would like to kick it off with my, can I kick it off with my question? So this essentially, after listening to everything, to me boils down to if we are going to retroactively allow a water quality transition zone to be essentially calculated as buildable land in this equation.
Yes.
And so as a zoning commissioner, I'm not actually allowed to retroactively change the land development code at the time that this amendment was created. Am I to understand that correctly?
Well, the 2005 ordinance established the PUD, prior to the PUD being established, after the settlement agreement, but before this PUD was enacted, the city adopted code sections to relate to what a PUD is and what the rules are for a PUD. One of those rules is that it shall comply with the overall, although each individual lot may be different, it shall comply on an overall basis. The impervious cover that was transferred, as I said earlier, the water quality transition zone property otherwise has a zero impervious cover limit unless, in certain exceptions, it can be moved over. So that, in 2005, that was not moved over. The applicant is saying that it should have been, and is using that as justification for getting to the 761.
Do we have any evidence that that was originally a part of the conversation to calculate the water quality transition zone as buildable land in this equation? And do we have evidence that that was in fact omitted by error?
No.
So at the time, the water quality transition zone was unbuildable land, and that is the way the land development code was written, because it was deferred to as unbuildable, referred to as unbuildable uplands only buildable, if that was a part of the equation?
Correct.
Okay.
The impervious cover was not transferred.
So that's the way the language was written at the time of the covenant?
I think that that's how they arrived at the number of the overall.
At the amendment, when the amendment was written, that was the land development code at the time.
When the PUD was written, when the PUD ordinance was written, yes, that's how it was calculated.
Okay. I just want to be clear about that. And what we're asked to do today is, in order to change this amendment, is to admit, A, that unbuildable area should have been buildable, and B, admit that there was a mistake made by staff to not include that number in the impervious cover calculations. Am I correct?
Yes, but let's say one clarification. The, it was not a decision made by staff, it was an ordinance, it was approved by the city council. So it was a negotiated deal, I presume, between city staff at the time, as well as the developer, and ultimately, the city council made the decision, and they made the decision, you know, to have a certain amount of impervious cover based upon not including that area you spoke of.
Okay. Are there any situations where we calculate impervious cover based on unbuildable land? Has there been?
I would say as a matter of general principle, that when you're talking about transferring development rights, you should only transfer the development rights that are in fact entitled, and not try to, not transfer development rights that otherwise do not exist.
Okay, so we're not looking at anything that, as it pertains to the Ponder's application being denied, we're looking at this strictly for the zoning PUD to PUD, so it's not really a zoning change. It's more looking, it's still a PUD.
Yes, we call a change in the condition of the.
So it's at the zoning commission right now, because we need to retroactively admit that this unbuildable land was in fact buildable?
Yes, formally, it's a request to amend a zoning ordinance. It's not a variance to the code.
Okay. All right. Do any of the other, do you have any questions?
I have a question, Mr. Ponder, of the Ponder's. In reading over your response to the city, as I understand it, you're saying there was no definite or specific impervious cover allocation for your property, is that right?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
So those, those numbers that you see right there, is that what you're...
So those, those numbers that you see right there, is that what you're referring to?
Just reading from your, your response to the city.
So the question is, was there impervious cover?
Specific, a specific allocation for your property.
Or were you looking at it as the PUD as a whole when you calculated?
The way that I calculated the seven hundred and sixty-one square feet was looking at the six point four nine acres, fourteen percent of that, and divide everything by fifty-two because there are fifty-two residences in the PUD. Does that help?
And to be a hundred percent clear, no one is building anything in the six and a half acres.
Yeah.
And this would not change that.
I understand. So. I believe, and I had staff print out this whole packet for me. That this should be highly scrutinized. And that the residents in your neighborhood do have a right to understand how this all applies to their lots, both collectively and individually. I think that that should be clear. I think there was a resident earlier that spoke about how small the road is in your neighborhood. And I think that speaks to the fact that there really isn't any impervious cover left in the current calculations. Because otherwise, why wouldn't the road be bigger? It's just a hazard.
We don't know the impervious cover.
So we have. This looks like it was a survey at some point, these must be from the original builder. And you calculated the impervious cover for the entire neighborhood based on the surveys that are currently filed at the city, correct?
The city didn't provide me with the surveys, they provided me with the builder documentation they received. And previously, there was a spreadsheet that staff told me had been lost, that kind of.
It might be that spreadsheet.
That might be what Alfonso has in his papers.
We got our line of that in twenty twenty-two.
From Sylvia.
And those numbers did not match those numbers.
Okay.
That is kind of where this whole thing began.
Right. The numbers that we got from the city said that we have two thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine square feet of impervious cover allocated to our property.
Okay, so again, I don't think that as a zoning commission, we're allowed to scrutinize your application. That's just not what we do. What we're looking at today is only the way that you were calculating that there was a mistake made in the original zoning where the water quality transition zone should have been calculated as buildable space.
Right, and the last.
Yeah.
The last time Sarah and I stood before this body was in twenty eighteen. We were under contract to purchase Ten Reese Drive, which many of you may know is in the it's in the thick of it, of where the water flows. And we got through city council and we had our building plans passed. And that's even more environmentally sensitive land. And so to pretend that fourteen percent impervious cover for land that was originally part of the PUD. To pretend that it doesn't exist, that it's zero, that it's improbable and calculable, just seems like giving up in so many ways.
We did not buy that land because we got it passed and we could have built a normal sized house on that land. But we did not because of the cost of the foundation, essentially.
And Rudy came and talked to us for a bit and she brought the former owner of twelve Rees who was a hydrologist and he talked to us about the water movement there. So this is a shared concern.
So other staff members and other board of adjustment members have to decide. It's not up to us whether or not to pass your, your plan. And I feel for you that you've been in this situation since twenty twenty-two, that is.
Sorry, I checked my notes, it was May of twenty twenty-one was when we tried to get.
Very, very long. I can't judge your proposal if it meets criteria in this, in this meeting. I apologize for that. What we're here today to decide is whether or not we believe that there should be a kind of reopening of that amendment. And I had read a lot of the original documents before coming here. And there's some pretty strong language in there. As far as guidelines for development in this, in this area. We have to make a decision if we would like city council to spend their time in reopening this. And that's what we're here today to vote on. I just, our hands are kind of tied on your plan, you know what I mean?
Point of order. I was reading through the, the city code. My understanding is that y'all can put this on ice for sixty days and re-mold things over. Or you have to provide a written thing to the city council within ten days saying approved, conditionally approved, or denied. Is that correct with section?
As far as I understand, we are just today here to vote whether we would like city council to look into changing this. We cannot make a change today. There's no hydrological information, there's no surveys, there's no studies, there's no, nothing we can do today to change this.
I think I just don't understand.
Section one fifty.
Yeah, I would like Jerry to.
But we're gonna have a city council meeting in two weeks and I know this is on the agenda, so.
What we're saying, what we're saying is, do we recommend reopening, scrutinizing this amendment to change the water quality transition zone into buildable land? That's literally all we can do today as a zoning commissioner.
So then my question is, let's say you all say, no, we don't want to do that. We're still gonna have the meeting in two weeks at city council and then what happens then?
I guess so.
Can I just?
I honestly, I don't know your process if that, they'll just look at our, our recommendation as they make their own decision. They don't need to take our recommendation. It's not, yeah, Jerry can speak to it, the process.
So commissioners, what's before you today, as we said, is an amendment, proposed amendment to the existing ordinance. The choice, the, the will of the commission, the commission may recommend the change as requested by the applicant. In which case, we would go to the city council on May twentieth and we would tell them the zoning commission recommended this case. The commission may also recommend denial of the request. In which case, we would inform the council that the commission recommended denial. Or as I said, the commission may postpone the case, but postpone it no longer than sixty days. So the, this commission makes recommendations to the city council on the requests that are made by applicants. And so there's three things, recommend approval, recommend denial, or postpone. Those are the things that are in front of the commission. It's up to the commission. Also, commissioners, I have received one additional email. And I feel obligated to read from the public. That's okay? I said I've received one additional email regarding this case.
Is it public comment?
Yes. So I'll read it as quickly as I can.
I'll allow it, just kidding, I'm just power tripping.
Chairman, members of the zoning commission, this is from a gentleman named Terry Cowan who lives over on Sterns Lane. We strongly oppose the proposed changes to the impervious cover restrictions and rear setback requirements for the property located at ten thirty Sunflower Trail. Sunset Valley is special because we are a community that truly values and protects our quality of life and environment. The city is located on top of the Ozark River, restrictions regarding impervious cover are created by the majority of people who live here to protect water quality. Not only for our families, but as part of our responsibility to surrounding communities that rely upon the Aquifer for Water Recreation such as Barton Springs is fed by the Aquifer water that flows underneath Sunset Valley. The restrictions were part of the original development proposal and the developer accepted them. The property owners implicitly agreed to this as part of living in Sunset Valley when they bought the property. Allowing changes now would only contradict the original agreement, but also set a precedent that could lead to less protection. When such exceptions are granted, it is not uncommon that other property owners and developers will seek similar variances, which could lead to gradual weakening of the important zoning requirements our community that protect our quality of life and the environment. If the current property owners have a special situation they feel needs to be addressed, they can take it to the board of adjustment rather than ask for changes to requirements that could potentially negatively impact everybody else. I think I addressed that a little bit earlier. Please uphold the current zoning requirements for ten thirty Sunflower Trail. I would also very quickly like to point out that, you know, there's been a lot of talk of spreadsheets and what is lost and what is not lost. Staff has to go off of what is in an ordinance, okay? So while there are the spreadsheet that Alfonso spoke of that, you know, we have right here. That was a spreadsheet that was done in two thousand eight by the staff and it's not the law. The law is the zoning ordinance. It is true that in the zoning ordinance, there was one, there was the requirement that sellers be notified of how much impervious cover is remaining on their lot and that the restrictive covenant be enacted as such. And there was also referral to an exhibit A that talked about development regulations. The exhibit A is the, is the document that the city is not able to locate at this time. However, I think it is, you know, a rather safe assumption because of the requirement that everyone be notified of the impervious cover situation, both through a pre-sale document as well as a post-sale document. That the inference was that the, all the impervious cover was used up with the development. That being said, I cannot say, you know, right now explicitly that that is true. There was a spreadsheet that was done by the staff to try to account for this impervious cover here, as well as a two thousand eight spreadsheet, as well as one that was done. At some point, I don't think it's dated. So one thing that the staff would agree, one thing that this case has brought to light is that, and we'd probably be speaking to city council about this in the future, is that there is a need for a clarification on how much impervious cover is in the in the Villas right now. I think that that would take a lot of work, to go out and measure how much everybody has. However, right now, the applicant is requesting to amend the ordinance to allow them another seven hundred and sixty-one feet when the staff believes that there are not seven hundred and sixty-one square feet more to give. And they're justifying that number as we spoke about through the, including the water quality transition zone, which is something that the staff disagrees with.
I appreciate that, but I would also like to know, is a restrictive covenant something that can be retroactively created and filed with the city of Travis County?
No, no.
Then that is done, that ship has sailed.
So you can amend it.
So it's just the ordinance that we're focusing on today and whether or not. Okay, I understand. I believe these residents need some answers and I think that I think it sounds very expensive to do a survey on every single property. I know how expensive surveys are. But I think that we need a final number on that. I'm just, that's my personal opinion, it's not as a commissioner, I just feel for these residents and I know that frustration. I think they need answers and I know it's not on a lot by lot basis because it's a whole PUD. It's the whole enchilada, we need to know everything. And so who's responsible for that? Where does the responsibility lie? We have individual surveys, individual building plans, everything, we can piece together some of it. With the roads, I, I don't know how long of a process that, that would be, how long it would take to learn the total IC of the neighborhood. But that may be something that we could request to city council as one of our recommendations. I would deny this myself based on I don't retroactively have the power to take away development in a water quality transition zone. And that's environmentally sensitive land and that is the way the land development code has been written. I, my hands are tied with that. But I do think that these residents deserve answers and I don't love that the city doesn't have definitive answers. I do not see a variance process for every single lot as, you know, something that the city wants to be constantly inundated with. I think knowing that number and being confident in it is going to be very important. We all want to protect the environmental, environmentally sensitive. We don't want our neighbor's property to flood. We don't want our neighbor's property's foundation to be damaged because we created a patio and all the water just goes into their basement. We need these numbers and we need it for, to know how to take care of these residents. And the fact that the builder bailed isn't really a part of the equation anymore. It's, that's in the past, so. That's, that's where I stand.
So you're saying that we cannot act on this application?
I'm saying that I would motion to deny re-amending the amendment that, the ordinance, sorry, now my. I'm saying the ordinance that they're asking to amend, which would include the water quality transition zone being a part of the calculation of impervious cover. That is what we're talking about today. It's not their individual application, that's not our domain.
Okay, then I guess I'm not clear why the staff presented it to us in that way.
So it is, it is a request, it is a request by the applicant.
The way it is, the way the staff presented it here, we're to vote on this application.
Right, so it is, it's a request from the applicant. The staff told them that it could necessarily be a variance for the reasons I spoke about earlier. So they are requesting an amendment to the existing PUD ordinance to increase the impervious cover. Simply, if it were to be approved, the ordinance would simply say the impervious cover limit at ten thirty Sunflower Trail is X, okay? And then we would go back and try and address the issue of how much does everybody have? Because I think the safe assumption for twenty years, the presumption has been none. And that's why the city changed the code two years ago to allow for those exemptions in the Villa specifically. But that being said, again, I cannot say exactly how much each lot has. But we do have a request in front of you right now that is a very specific request for ten thirty Sunflower Trail to reduce the setback and to to increase impervious cover by seven hundred and sixty-one square feet. As I said, you know, the recommendation of the commission here today will be forwarded to the city council for a meeting on May twentieth. So it's either recommend approval, recommend denial, recommend approval with conditions, or to postpone the case with a time limit on how long you can postpone.
And commissioners? So also, I would just, I would just like to add to that, that we did, you know, there's been questions about, you know, why a staff brought it in this specific way, a zoning amendment. We did confer with legal and legal did agree with Jerry's approach to this. We even researched, you know, other cities. And other cities within their PUD ordinances have what's called, you know, there's minor amendments that often can be administratively approved. And then there are things like, called major amendments. Typically, major amendments are things like lot setbacks and for sure, things like additional impervious cover. So those are called major amendments. And in fact, in our own PUD ordinance, it says, it doesn't use the word amendment, but it does say major changes should follow the same proceedings that the original development plan was implemented, so.
So by recommending this, we are essentially recommending their proposal to apply to the rest of the PUD.
Now, this request, this request is specific to this address.
The seven hundred and sixty square feet per lot should be, I read in their proposal, it should be applied to every resident.
That is their opinion on what should be done, I guess, you know, as a whole for the whole subdivision. That is not what's before you right now. What's before you right now is specifically to allow for seven hundred and sixty-one square feet of additional impervious cover and a setback reduction at ten thirty Sunflower Trail.
So I, I need to take a look at their, their proposal then because there, I see violations in the land development code in their, on their survey that they provided to you, on their their site plan, I guess you would call it. So is that what you're asking us to do at this moment then? To identify why or why not we would approve or deny this? Because number one, I know for a fact our land development code does not count a raised foundation as anything other than just complete impervious cover. It doesn't take into account, that's just impervious cover. The fact that water can flow under it, et cetera, it's, there's a small minor allowance for that. But it's not, I mean, I'd have to go through point by point on this.
Well, council, as Jerry mentioned, council did make changes in. Well, council, as Jerry mentioned, council did make changes in 2022 to the land development code to allow for exemptions. And included in that was exemptions for certain lot sizes, a fourth of an acre, which basically is the villas, and you, it allowed for 200 feet of exemptions. Now, there's certain criteria that those exemptions must meet, but in working with the applicant, the city, and with, they provided information from the original surveyor, from ATS, and so in working with staff, we were able to administratively approve an addition to their house right here, a small pad right here, and they were also able to build a pool and an improvement right here. Everything in the turquoise is what is essentially on this application that you're considering tonight. That is what they are asking to build. They're asking for additional impervious cover to build everything in the, is that turquoise?
Is there a hydrological study or a flood study or any other information on the properties so that we can ascertain whether or not we're creating a risk for the neighbors by having this much impervious cover on a small lot? Is there any other information to go off of?
No.
No, we just have the site plan.
Can I ask a question of Matt? The, when you did the 200 square feet and the other parts of the city, it's a different number. Well, I guess city council did that.
Yes.
It was after Roy's thing. What was that calculation actually based on?
Impervious cover for the whole PUD, I believe.
That's my question, because I don't think it is, because the way it's written is it's like lots and sunset, it's for the whole city. And so what I'm kind of wondering now that that was brought up is, it sounds like when they did that 200, 400, 600, 800 thing, those kind of just sound like round kind of random numbers. And I'm just wondering, there it is, so.
Okay, I was on the planning and environmental committee when we passed this.
So, so my question really is, how did you arrive at those numbers?
Because there were things like air conditioning pads that were being counted as impervious cover that are just necessary for the functioning of the house, that we did not believe should be included in the impervious cover for a house to be built, with the original intentions.
I mean the 200, 400, 600, 800.
We had a lot of piecemeal language and it was very confusing, extremely Byzantine to get through. We wanted to clarify for residents the exact number that was allowed, and that's it. We did not want variances, we did not want workarounds, we did not want language that was competing with other language, well, this is a path that has little spaces between it, you know, like, there were just so many different, different guidelines there. It was hard to get through, and we worked like, I believe, like, a year or so on creating this so that was super streamlined, easy to understand. I think it was generous at the time, actually, it was, Carolyn, you can correct me, was it, it was more generous than it was in the past.
Oh, yes.
It was quite controversial at the time that we were allowing this much, because there were a lot of people that were super sensitive to water quality, flooding, filtration, et cetera, in the environmental and planning committees. So this was like highly scrutinized and we did it painstakingly.
Yeah, I knew you did. I was just really wondering about like, because we've spent a lot of time talking about 6.49 acres and whether those feet are in the feet. I was just wondering if like that was part of it? No?
It was on a lot-by-lot basis.
That is why originally we thought we would just do a variance, and we were told by staff that we could not do a variance, by the way.
Yeah, there are going to be, get the variance requests.
There will be variance requests, 100%.
Okay, otherwise, then if you're saying we're not going to allow any, then take it out of our code.
That's right, but I'm not in a position to.
That's why we're here, really, that's why we're here, that we should have been allowed to just do a variance. And I am of the opinion that the only reason why we were not allowed to just do a variance, which frankly, if we put in a variance, like, vote up or down, like, that's a fair process. It's the same process that everyone else has ever had to go through. I honestly believe that the reason why we are here today is that Jerry was hired less than, however many years ago, one or two years ago. Because prior to him being hired, no one ever told anybody in the villas that if they wanted additional impervious cover, they had to go through zoning. They told everybody in the villas, if you want additional impervious cover, you go get a variance.
The council has never heard an impervious cover variance request.
She's talking about building setbacks.
Yeah.
Our requests are really three. We want to build a pool cabana. Jerry was originally of the opinion that a pool cabana is not permitted. In the city ordinance, you'll see in my application, that I went in and analyzed all of the language, and a pool cabana would be allowed, but we put that in there. The second request is the 761 square feet. And then the third is to build in the 12-foot, in the 15-foot setback. And our neighbor, Bob, who had to leave, he's got a variance for the 12-foot setback.
And the other violations of the land development code, like putting storage units right on the property line, that was already.
Correct, there, if you walk around Sunflower Trail.
The parts that are in green, you've already had approved by the city and are already in the process of being built.
Those are, those are in flow.
So you already had basic administrative approval and you're coming back to us to ask?
That's not the property line, that's the setback line, the dotted line to the setback lines.
I put the blue setback dashed for the, where the 12-foot setback would be if that was approved. And F, that is where like a little pool cabana would be. D on the north side of the house, that's just a shed for pool stuff. A is the pool equipment pad, and because the American Red Cross recommends it, we wanted to do a five-foot pool surround for safety, because the kids are mine, they're clumsy.
Okay, I understand, I see, I see possibly where the issues are in terms of impervious cover, and I see why you've approached this by trying to gain more impervious cover by including the 6.5 acres, because already just the covered patio alone, you're on a quarter acre, that's it, you're done. That's, and so all these other, it's like way above and beyond what planning and environmental had in mind for impervious cover. Also, you're looking at current impervious cover being a lot more than the rest of the city.
Matt, can you show the other pictures, Matt? The ones that are, that Ross provided and the graphs that Ross provided?
This is the final page of the Weaver settlement. You'll see that the villa's PUD is, it was originally a little bit over 37 acres. My theory is that there was a carve-out, city hall and such, and that, then can we go down? You'll see the final plat. There was a question about the way water flows. Our site is on an incline. The high point of the land is here. Water flows that way toward the water quality pond.
Actually, when we were digging the pool, we were surprised to not hit rock as quickly as we thought we would, and we're pretty sure, which again, we weren't around, so we don't actually know for sure. The water quality pond, we think that they took the dirt and the rock and used it to help build up all the lots along our row, so that water does flow very well. Like literally, Bob, Bob's, page five, Ross says page five he wants to show. Bob's neighbor, Bob is our neighbor, he, his fence is literally five feet from the edge of where we're building, so like this far. And I was just looking at it today, his fence, on his side of the fence, does not look one ounce different than it did two months ago.
I just wanted to highlight this image. I did a lot of data entry, and you'll see that a lot of properties have 51% impervious cover or more. Y'all at 1038, you're at 51%. We're trying to get right near y'all in terms of impervious cover. We're squarely within the bell curve.
So commissioners, I believe we've moved, we've moved to the question portion of the public hearing, and I believe the public comment period is done. So I think that at this point, you know, we're at the stage where the commission is asking questions of other staff or members of the audience to ultimately to a potential motion.
I have a question about the original language. So I came across something that I need clarification on, because in the original language of, gosh, I don't know, I highlighted it, "The maximum density on the property shall be no greater than 1.5 times the density allowed without PUD zoning based on gross site average." I need some math there.
That is in the, that is in the zoning ordinance. That is section two, I'm sorry, section three, letter B.
I need some math there.
So gross site footage, gross site acreage takes out, you know, the otherwise unbuildable areas we spoke about earlier, so, I'm sorry, gross site would include the entire acreage as opposed to net site. Net site would be a term for when you take out the otherwise unbuildable areas because of water quality zones, et cetera. So this, this section of the ordinance is, it's just stating that on the overall density within the PUD shall not be greater than one and a half times the density within the PUD. So it was an attempt to try to limit, basically it's how you got to the 52 houses, is what it is.
So would this put us over that, that limit, I guess?
No, no, because it's addressing units, not impervious cover and setback.
So one and a half times, what, 18%? This would be an 18% area.
Well, this is not, this is not addressing impervious cover, this is addressing units per acre.
Right, right. I mean, I would like to know staff reasons for denying these structures because?
Denying which structures?
The cabana and the coping that is five feet and the.
Oh, well, because they're requesting, we worked through the impervious covers best we could, and we did the permits that they're using right now to build a pool and to build the additions. So what they're asking for right now is to add the five-foot walk area around the pool, the 250 square foot cabana, and then I believe it's 200 square foot covered patio. That needs additional impervious cover and it needs a modification to the rear setback. So that is their request right now, is to make those modifications specifically to their address, so that they can build those things that are not covered under the permit that they are constructing right now.
I don't know where to take this meeting from here. Do we call for a vote?
So things again, I think there could be a motion by the commission to either.
Motion, motion to approve or deny. Does anyone want to open it up?
So at least, I've got one comment just on the five-foot pool surround, so given that the pool's been approved by the city and it's probably a insurance requirement and likely somewhere within the code, I would say at least the pool surround needs to be allowed, if nothing else is, for more reasons than just impervious cover, coverage, right?
Yeah, so it's not a, it's not a code requirement. I understand why somebody would want it. We do have pools in town that actually just have the coping and go straight to dirt. You know, the commission could recommend to council that, you know, a reduction from the request to, you know, approve it with x amount of square feet and say 761 square feet that the requested. That's up to you.
Okay, so I believe that this would be setting a precedent, like, that all the other neighbors would want to jump on the bandwagon, so we need to take that into consideration. And whether or not we believe in these calculations, including the water quality transition zone, I don't believe that should be a part of this calculation to make an additional amount of square footage. I just think that that's bad math. I just have an issue with that.
When we, I had to go to the, the surveying company, and when going back and forth with the surveying company and city staff, we discovered that we had 132 square feet of impervious cover allocated but unused.
Okay.
And that got put in the stuffing green.
Okay.
But given that we don't know how the overall impervious cover allocation was used within the PUD, it is reasonable to assume that there is more impervious cover that is allocated and unused. So if we, if you want to disregard the six and a half acres, there is still unused and allocated impervious cover within various properties in the PUD.
I guess it's just for a person that has a very low impervious cover on my lot, it's just shocking to me to see that high of a number. I worry about the neighbors and the ability to flood their properties, and with deluge of rain, I, pools fill up. I, you know, you talked about a water retention pond, is that something that you also planned on your property?
Behind, that's behind us, it's a few years ago.
Oh, right. Oh, just the one behind city, city hall? Oh, okay. So the mitigation measures that you have in place are sufficient for this?
Yes.
Okay, what has been proposed?
Again, I think that we've moved from the public comment period to other questions or a possible motion.
Yeah, okay, I understand, I'm, yeah. Need to be at the podium. All right. I'm gonna sit back until someone motions.
You want to motion?
I would like someone to motion, and then we can open it up for further discussion if we need.
Well, I'll move. If we approve the application, a recommendation to the city council, it'd be approved.
Okay, you, motion to approve, do we have a second?
So I care, clarify, we're approving, what exactly, we're moving this moves to city council for them to discuss, we're approving that they.
We're making the recommendation to approve.
So, so the, so the commission needs to make a recommendation to the city council. So again, you can either move to recommend approval of the request made by the applicant, recommend denial, recommend approval with conditions, or you can postpone. So it sounds like, you know, the motion on the table, it sounds like it would be to approve the applicant's request.
Are the paver walkways permeable? I'm asking you, Jerry.
No.
No?
There are walkways that are included in the exemption that we spoke of earlier, the 200 square foot exemption that now applies in the villas as well as the rest of the city.
That's already allocated 42, yes.
Yes, the 761 has taken into account the exemptions that they can receive.
Is the pool surround permeable? Is the pool surround permeable on the application?
The pool coping is included in the impervious cover calculation for the permit that's already been issued. This request is to add the five-foot walkway around the pool.
Is it permeable?
No.
It's not permeable, and this walkway is not permeable?
Correct.
Is the seven sixty-one provision to the two hundred?
Yes.
Setback seems fine, there's no one behind them.
I think on pages two to four, there's a detailed breakdown of what is existing structures, in construction, what's proposed.
Environmental and planning would be so horrified if, I just can't. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna second it, I'm sorry. It's just against the spirit of the way that we work so diligently on impervious cover. So if there's a second to approve, I don't know how to quite go about that.
So you have motions being made, you need a second for that motion to carry forward.
I feel really bad.
So it appears the motion dies for like a second?
So the motion dies, there's no second. The motion dies, okay. Okay.
Now there could be another motion.
That means there's three of us that, motion to deny? Oh, boy.
Yeah, I'm almost in the thought of postponing of the decision, but that's probably not a good thing after all this.
It's twenty twenty-two.
It is posted for city, so we do, we did a double posting as required by the, you know, the land development code. So it's posted to go to city council on May twentieth. There is a shot clock built in to the code for zoning amendments.
Is the city lawyer present?
Yes.
Yes. Is the city in any way liable for flooding on other people's property should this go south? Or damage to other homes, foundations, or...
I'm uncertain how to answer that question. I would have to research that. But I would believe that sovereign immunity would come into play.
Yeah, okay. This is, feels just really bad. Okay. Can I make a motion to deny? We have someone that needs to, wants to speak, are we? Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, well, we have to make the motion here, don't we? Or is just the motion just dies?
No, because you need to make a recommendation to the city council.
I make a motion to not recommend to city council.
To recommend denial.
I need more information on the plan. I would rather see a lot...
You can make that motion, they would have to see if there's a second for it.
That would be an amendment, but...
But a motion to deny would mean that we don't recommend that they make the change.
So a motion to deny would mean that we don't make a recommendation to make the change and therefore if the city council followed that, then they would deny their request to allow more impervious coverage, right?
That's correct, yeah.
They can ignore our request, our recommendation.
They can make a different decision than what you do. But your job is to make a recommendation to them on an application, which is...
There is a, if the motion is to deny, there is a, correct, there's a super majority trigger.
Meaning the city council would need a super majority to override.
Super majority to override the zoning commission's denial of the recommendation. Or denial of the application.
Setback has been approved by staff? No, okay.
The staff did not recommend this approval.
That could be an appeal that you make to city council, you know, please approve our setback request. Yeah, staff is recommending that you get the setback request.
The setback would require the additional impervious cover to build the building that is going to encroach into the setback. So the setback is triggered by the, you know, by the additional impervious cover. And it is true that there have been setback hearings that have gone to the board of adjustment specific to the Villas, but in all three of those, they were not asking for additional impervious cover. They were only asking for encroachment into the setbacks for things like a deck or a pergola, not for asking for additional impervious cover.
I can't in confidence recommend it just based on, we don't know the legality of this. This is astronomical impervious cover figures. I can't in good conscience recommend this to council to approve. It's, I mean, it's high. Yeah. Yeah, I'm discussing with my fellow commissioners.
Need to make sure we're following proper decorum.
Proper decorum, correct. What is the total percentage of impervious cover that is being requested on the lot?
Fifty-one point something.
The entire lot, how much impervious cover would be after the proposed improvements? No, just...
We have a question, I would say, yes.
Staff can answer the total impervious cover.
Yeah, I believe it's fifty-one and a half percent if I'm remembering the, on the lot. This would bring, so it says this would bring our total coverage to fifty-one point five percent of our seventy-three, seven thousand three hundred fifty-one square foot lot.
Okay.
And again, you know, they...
I saw the chart that you're writing the median. It just seems...
Which, that chart was, those impervious cover standards were established when the PUD was created back in two thousand five.
Which is a total pie chart, not an individual lot.
Correct, correct. It was intended that lots have different impervious cover.
Different variations because it's a total...
Correct.
All right.
Commissioners, like, we need a motion.
Did you make a motion, Jerry?
I did. Second, we have a second of the motion to deny. All in favor of the motion to deny? That's three, so moved, right?
So I'll tell you, was the...
So moved.
Russell, were you abstaining, voting no?
Abstain. You're voting to deny? So it's a unanimous...
It's four zero.
Okay.
Are we allowed to request an amended motion?
No, no, the public hearing is closed.
So is it at city council we would ask for an amended motion?
Correct, you can, you will be able to make, have public comments at the city council.
No, no, that's not my question. My question, Matt, is, let's say we wanted a different thing to be considered.
Yes.
How do we do that? Like, for example, let's...
You can write a letter and amending your application.
Okay, that's insane. It's been a really long time and I'm starting to get pretty freaking mad, so...
Okay, the public hearing's over.
Matt, I don't have clarity on what I'm trying to do. So can I just ask a question about the process?
We can speak to you later.
No, that's not fair because the entire community does not know the process. I'm asking a question about the process for getting either a variance or a zoning change or how we change, because even Lisa didn't understand. So can I ask the question about the process, please?
Yes, I think that's...
Thank you, the chair has said yes, I can ask the question.
So what would you like to ask? Ask away.
Great, so... Again, we, this question was not really created by us, it was basically created by staff.
Which question?
The question that was voted on. The point that it was three different things and whatever. This whole process was created by staff.
That was your application.
Which we were told to do by the staff in a particular way. Because we are not land use attorneys. So my question is, if the entire Villas wanted to say that the Villas as a PUD should get X number of additional impervious cover for the entire PUD, and then people can apply to get parts of it. So let's just pretend, like I say, let's say the Villas gets an extra ten thousand square feet across the entire Villas, and you want to apply to get seven hundred of them.
I have an idea.
How does one create a motion to ask for that proposition to be voted on?
I have an idea, zoning commission can make a request to city council to look into the impervious cover of the Villas. And I would like to add that to our denial that we need clarification.
You could make, you could make a separate recommendation to council, you know, such as they could consider a neighborhood-wide review of the Villas' PUD standards, including, you know, clarifying impervious cover allocations, addressing administrative and records gaps, and establishing a formal amendment process for future PUD amendments.
Please, these residents deserve that.
That was one thing we were going to talk to the council about.
Thank you.
Would you like to make that a...
I would like to make that request. We actually have a right to this information and the residents do as well. And we cannot make informed decisions without it.
And Jerry, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, no, I think that you can say that that was intended to be a part of the motion that you passed and we'll make sure that information's forwarded on the city council.
Thank you very much.
And does that address what you were...
Almost, so since we're going to city council in two weeks and everything's already been posted or whatever, can the zoning commission, are you allowed or whatever, to say, we recommend that the Villas' PUD be given some number of square feet that then they can apply to use? Is that what we're saying?
To make sure we comply with the Open Meetings Act, that is not posted. But I think that we can have a general statement from the commission that says that they would like, they would like to ask the council or direct the staff to look into the issue of the impervious cover allotment on the Villas. That's my understanding of what it would be. But we do not have an item posted right now to add additional square footage to anything other than the lot that we're discussing today. So I think it's more of a general statement to look into this issue as opposed to granting a specific number or something like that.
Great, motion to adjourn the meeting?
Wait, 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 sorry, one more process question. So legally, on the twentieth, then what is being discussed on the twentieth?
On the twentieth, we will be discussing your zoning request, the request that was here today. We'll inform them of the commission's recommendation and we'll have another public hearing to do this all over again.
And so then what is council's options at the twentieth?
Again, I'm sorry, but...
And this might be a legal question for Darren.
Again, we have to, it's the zoning commission meeting. And so if the zoning commissioners have any questions for the staff or any questions for the audience, I think that we can answer those. But I don't think right now we should be engaging in a back and forth between the staff and the public.
This is not a back and forth, this is the way for the residents to understand the process. So what are the options for the city council to discuss and vote on on the twentieth?
Madam Chair, I believe that we are on the next agenda item, which is the discussion of the rules of the commission.
I think that that could be answered in an email, potentially.
I've never gotten an email from Jerry.
I'll look into it for you.
But this is an open meeting and the meeting agenda has been posted for the twentieth. And so I'm, what I do not know the answer to and why I keep asking it is what is council...
I believe the resident is asking if she can amend what she is submitting to council and can she make any improvements before that meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
But again, on a individual lot, not as the property owner.
Right, but, so council has the legal authority to either approve or deny or what?
Approve, approve with conditions or deny.
Okay. Okay, so the legal opinion of the city is that on May twentieth, the five voting city council members will review all of this. They'll read the code and all the things. And then they will then, using their power as those five people, approve, deny, or conditionally, whatever. Yes, is that correct?
If you have a question of the staff, I think that we have to, this is a public meeting and it is not the appropriate place for staff to be directly answering questions from the public. This is a zoning commission meeting. If you have questions, then, you know, feel free to contact us outside of this meeting.
We have another agenda item tonight, which we have to get to, which is item number seven, presentation and discussion of a proposed realignment of the zoning commission to include planning. Should we discuss that, who has the presentation? Or should we table it for next time? I believe we should just get it over with.
Yes, so this item presents a proposal to realign the responsibilities of the zoning commission and the planning and environmental committee to better reflect standard municipal practices in Texas. So many cities have what's called, you know, planning and zoning. And actually, if you read our land development code, it even mentions, probably where we borrowed code language from other cities, it even mentions planning and zoning. But for many, many years, the city has had the planning and environmental committee, which has its own history. And then it has established the zoning commissions, which has powers, you know, vested by the state as a general law city. So as part of a larger discussion that council has been having about some committee and commission realignment, one of the proposals is to change the P and E committee. It would conveniently keep the same letters and be, still be P and E, but it would be parks and environmental. And it would transition that committee to focus on, to still focus on environmental programs and any policy recommendations relating to the environment, such as wildlife safety fencing, development and stewardship of city parks, green spaces and conservation lands, and advising on green space acquisitions and trail connectivity projects. And then there would be a code amendment to the land development code to bring planning duties, really it's planning review duties. Again, decisions are made. The zoning commission would be a planning and zoning commission, but you would still be a recommending body ultimately, making recommendations that would be adopted by city council. So Jerry did, again, this is a very, this is a rough draft, but just added some amendments, some proposed amendments. We're not making any recommendation or any, this is discussion only and to get some feedback to take back to council. We'll be considering amending chapter thirty, excuse me, amending chapter thirty-one on May twentieth and June third. But then we would need to bring, if we were going to make the zoning commission, the planning and zoning commission, we would need to bring back a formal land development code amendment to you with a public hearing, similar to what we did earlier this evening with the fencing. So, any questions or anything that Jerry wants to add?
Would there be a subcommittee for land development code or would that be... Or would that be handled primarily by planning?
So if you're talking about a land development code rewrite?
Yes.
Yeah, that, that would be a whole entirely separate process. Code rewrite's a big deal, and we anticipate there would be a public outreach plan approved by the city council. It would probably be either an ad hoc committee or a separate standing committee. It would probably be made up of people from various city commissions, such as the PEC, planning, zoning, et cetera, et cetera. And probably citizens as well, you know, who are not a committee. I can assure you that unless the city council wants to go this way, which I can imagine they would, I would not recommend, that it would be simply this body handling the heavy lift of the code rewrite. That, that's not gonna happen.
Okay. So it would not be a subcommittee, it'd be an ad hoc committee?
It would be up to the city council. When I'll be, when we get to that point, I'll be asking the city council for a, for an outreach plan or maybe suggesting one and seeing what they think of it. But it would probably, would, would involve a separate commission, committee, whatever you want to call it, ad hoc, whatever you want to call it, a standing committee to just address the, the land development code rewrite. I would anticipate, of course, ultimately, at the end of the day, when it goes through all that, we'll have to come before this body for a recommendation and go into city council as a code amendment, a big code amendment. But I don't think that it would be, I really doubt the city council would say the zoning commission to be, the planning and zoning commission to be the only body that weighs in on the code rewrite. That's just not realistic, and I've never heard something like that happen.
Does anyone want to make a motion?
Oh, it's, it's discussion only, because we would have to bring this back, like I said. So, just any feedback on, again, and the planning and environmental committee has actually already recommended in, on these, you know, recommended making these changes. So we just wanted to kind of bring it to you, see if there's any strong objections or feelings either way before we report to council.
I love planning.
There you go.
And I love land development code, so it's right up my alley.
All right, great. So, I, that's, that's all we have. So unless there's any specific feedback to give to council, we'll just say in general... No one objects to it. No one objects, great?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
We're, we're amenable. All right, motion...
Quick agenda item.
Oh, yeah. Oh, no, yeah. Motion to adjourn the meeting? All in favor? Aye. We don't have to do that, but Miguel, in the spirit of Miguel...